At this time, I'll call the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us, so there ain't changes to that agenda. If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item would be the ceremonial oath of office for the newly elected council members. I'd like to ask City Clerk Stephen Anderson to come forward to provide the oath of office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have our newly elected members and our reappointed member, please stand. Have you raised your right hand and read?
Alex, put it on the screen, please.
Have you read that out loud?
I.
I.
Craig Schaefer do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and to discharge faithfully the duties devoted on me as council member to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. You may be seated.
So, congratulations. And we look forward to your term of service on the Marshall City Council. I know that each of you duly elected will serve your constituents and the community and the region well, so thank you and congratulations. We'd also welcome this evening our newly appointed city attorney Pam Whitmore. So Pam, welcome.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with the agenda then. Agenda item number two would be a donation from the Marshall Baseball Association. So with that, I'd like to ask Preston Stendro to come forward from our Community Services and Parks Department, and he will introduce also the board members that are here for Marshall Baseball Association.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Kelly, Derek, and Russ from the Marshall Baseball Association to prevent a donation to some future construction plans at Legion Field. Just to give you a little bit of background, about a year ago now, we started working with Confluence Architects out of Sioux Falls, who also designed the terrace 1872 next to City Hall here, on just getting all the associations together to kind of get a vision for the future of Legion Field. We haven't finalized that plan. I talked with Chad from Confluence yesterday, and we're still moving forward with trying to get everybody's needs and stuff addressed. It is in the CIP for kind of a five-year phased plan. We need dugouts, bathrooms, concessions, numerous things and upgrades. And with that's going to come a lot of collaboration from associations. The university uses it, the school uses it for Tiger baseball, youth baseball, et cetera. So with that, I would just like to recognize Marshall Baseball and their contribution to help reinvest in our facilities, and they have a check to the City Marshal for a donation amount of $26,000 to improvements to Legion Field. And we have started a project account now, so we're gonna, just kind of until we get everything put together, that'll sit there, and as we get plans further along, we'll start utilizing those too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly, who has a few words.
Thanks, Preston. Thanks, Mayor and council members, for letting us have a few minutes here tonight, but just want to reiterate what Preston mentioned about the improvements at Legion Field and why we think it's very important. You know, we host a lot of tournaments. As you know, our association put in a bid for the state amateur tournament last about a year and a half ago. We did not get that here for later on in the next 10 years, but that could be something that we'd like to do in the future, to host that. But there's opportunities for numerous other Legion and junior Legion tournaments and those type of things. So we think just, you know, partnership with the City of Marshall and Preston, his staff does an unbelievable job. I can't stress that enough, the usage that Legion Field gets, not only Legion, but other parks, obviously, for our youth sports and his staff, it does an unbelievable job. So, you know, we think the improvements that are already undergoing, you know, we did the infield a couple of years ago, which is just very impactful for the play of games, and we have section tournaments that we want to continue to bring to Marshall from the high school in May and June, and continue that with all of our tournaments that we have through MABE and, of course, through amateur baseball with the Marshall A's. And so it's just been a great partnership. And again, I want to stress the job that Preston and his staff does to make that field great, and we want to continue to do that with, as you mentioned, dugouts and other improvements. And, you know, it's a major park in our, in our community, and it gets used not just for baseball, but for the playground outside of that, and we'll continue to do that. So we're just appreciative of all his work, and we want to just, like as Preston mentioned, make a donation of $26,000 from the Marshall Baseball Association, and just appreciate your commitment to our parks and our ballparks here in the City of Marshall. So, thank you very much.
Come up and get a little picture. How about you guys go?
We'll go up here, sure.
You go down there. Get me out of it.
I got one.
Deb's got it.
Do a photo op.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you guys walk out the door, hang around for just a minute. So once again, I think sincere thank you. You know, City of Marshall and Marshall Baseball Association have really a long history of partnerships, and that partnership has resulted in quality facilities, and that doesn't happen without really good leadership, and that's what we have this evening, representing the Marshall Baseball Association. So I don't know if we've fully introduced the members that are here, but Kelly Loft, Russ Sano, and Derek Rignell are here representing Marshall Baseball Association, so thank you once again. Okay, we'll move then to Agenda item number three. This would be considered the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 27, 2022. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second? Seconded by Craig to approve the minutes. That motion does not require discussion, so we'll move to a vote.
Minimize it.
Go here.
And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. See, did you?
Well, because it's a minute, right? And it wasn't here. It's upstate.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that later, so.
Sorry, I missed already? No.
You're fine. Yes.
And hey, Bob, for the record, I mean, they get like a rookie claim for at least six months, right?
Yes.
Three months.
All gonna be gentle with each other this evening. Okay, so we'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda, and we have, we have a large number of items on the consent agenda, and this is, a number of these are annual housekeeping things. So I'll read through the items that we have on the consent agenda. The resolution designating the official newspaper, the resolution delegating the city to make electronic fund transfers, the resolution designating the official depositories for city's funds for 2023, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the finance director to pay certain claims, the adoption of the ordinance for, related to grass and weeds on private property, adoption of the ordinance related to the lodging tax imposition, the adoption of the ordinance related to the qualifications and compensations, the introduction of the ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned land, the patuminous overlay, consider the authorization advertised for bids, the approval of the 2023 liquor license renewal, consider the approval of a temporary on-sale liquor license, the adoption of the annual election to set a micro purchase threshold of $25,000, consider the approval of the updated conduit debt, the private activity taxes on financing policy, the declaring surplus items at the Adult Community Center, consider the approval of Fliridian Hood Librarying Services contract for the Technical Education Pilot Program, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So the items on the consent agenda, any member of the council can remove that from the consent agenda, and that will allow separate discussion. So if you have questions about an item, or if you just want an item laid on the table for discussion or separate action, that would be, you can request that now. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr., our number 15, please.
Any other item?
Move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So Agenda item number 15, the annual election to set the micro purchase threshold at $25,000. Steve?
Yeah, so my question is, you know, historically, this has been $10,000, correct? Yes. Okay, so now we're going up to $25,000, and in today's day and age with inflation and the economy, $25,000 goes really quick. However, just for taxpayers' information, I wanted to know, is there a good reason to go up? I mean, 25% from $10,000 is 150%, so we're going up a lot. So is there a reason for that? Is there? Because we're doing a lot of things going up really fast and really high, and so I just want to make sure that I'm okay with it when I make the vote.
Sure, and thank you, Steve. And I'll recognize E.J. Moberg, our Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you. Yes, this is something that has been recommended by auditors at the Minnesota Government Finance Officers Association Conference in 2021. They were recommending to set it at a $25,000 level already. This dictates for when we make purchases using federal monies for the types of bid laws, et cetera, that we have to follow. So having a lower threshold means that as we start to spend some of the federal ARPA monies, for example, as we plan to do this year for some of the capital projects, that anything that is 10, over $10,000, we have to do additional work for. So this raises up to the $25,000 that is set by, set by state statute. There is a reference in the, in the memo to the federal reg that talks about that for public institutions, that a higher threshold consistent with state law. So back before I left Lyon County, we had adopted a $25,000 threshold. I noticed that we still had the $10,000 here. So the only, I didn't put the whole policy in the packet, or in the council packet for tonight, because it's like an eight-page policy that was approved in 2021. It's just the one piece that we would be changing. It's just for when we make purchases using federal dollars, to move to that higher threshold to allow us more flexibility to use the open market or quotations without having to immediately jump into quotes or even more strict with bids.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, E.J. Any other questions?
Given that, I would move approval.
Motion. Motion by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
There's something wrong with my screen.
And we'll close the voting.
Oh, is that the same thing? Is that the same?
And the motion passes.
I know what I thought.
Agenda item number 20 is the selection of the city council president pro tem, and this is a selection and the election process that's up to the members of the city council. President Pro Tem would serve as mayor if I would become incapacitated or unavailable. At this time, I'll open up for any nominations for President Pro Tem at the city council.
I would nominate the Honorable Craig Schaefer if he would so accept.
I'd second.
Yep, nominations don't take a second, so that's fine.
I don't care, that's what I was gonna roll for.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, is there a motion to close the nomination and cast a unanimous ballot for Craig Schaefer as President Pro Tem?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 21.
I voted against myself in the general election.
Agenda, Agenda item number 21, consider the mayor's appointments for council members to boards and commissions and committees. Earlier, the, each member of the city council had, had the opportunity to indicate their willingness, their preference, their choices on serving on various council committees. There are five standing committees that the council has, and then the council members also serve as liaisons to different boards and commissions. So based on your input, I really tried to honor not only your preferences, but also kind of fill all of the places where we need, need people, and tried to match an individual's expertise or experience with where it would fit best. So, so I've offered then the, the listing, and you have that before you, of the appointments to the council committees, Equipment Review Committee, Legislative Ordinance, Personnel Committee, Public Improvement Transportation and Waste of Means, as well as the liaisons to the boards and, and commissions. So, and finally, I also tried to provide a balance so that each of the city council members have roughly the same commitment as far as responsibilities. So I would offer that as a recommendation. I'm open to any suggestions, but I'd offer that as a recommendation, and if it's acceptable to the council, to entertain a motion to affirm those appointments.
I'd make a motion to affirm the appointments.
Motion by Amanda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you. And thanks to the council members for, there's a lot of extra time the council members put in on the committees and, and liaison, so thank you. Agenda item number 22, consider the appointments to various boards and commissions, bureaus, and authorities. So earlier this evening, the council did meet in special session, interviewed applicants for the Adult Community Center Commission, as well as the Merit Center, and based on those applications and the interviews that were held, I would recommend that Stephen Theris be appointed to a term on the Adult Community Center ending May 31, 2025, and that Eric Wallen be appointed to the Merit Center Commission for a term that, and this will be his second term, and this term will expire December 31, 2025 also. Offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
I so move.
I'll second.
Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda number 23 is West Lyon Street and our Third Street reconstruction project. We have the resolution that would receive the feasibility report and call for a hearing on the improvement. Jason, Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is, probably comes as no surprise for the council members that have been here for a while, but maybe for, I'll give a little more background, as I'm able here, for the new council members. This is a reconstruction project downtown, five blocks downtown. You can see a map up on the screen. It's Lyon Street, West Lyon Street from College Drive to Fifth Street, and Third from Main to Redwood. We've been working on this project and doing some scoping and outreach on this project for quite some time now. Spent a lot of meetings and a lot of time with the Downtown Business Association as our primary outlet for getting feedback on the project. Bolton Mink's been hired on this project to, to help us along because there is quite a bit of streetscaping element and just different features to this project that we thought it made sense to bring them, bring them along and bring them on board. We started out designing the project in-house and having them help us with the streetscaping, and then with the loss of our Assistant City Engineer, we, we moved into utilizing their services for total project design. We're, we're getting close on the project design. We're probably in the 70% plan stage, I would say. What you see, the scoping sheet in, in the packet for your reference, and along with the feasibility report, is kind of a, a background of what the, the project could look like on the surface. It's a complete reconstruction downtown, concrete surfacing being proposed, pipe size increases for the storm sewer system, bigger water main, and new and improved sanitary sewer, and likely doing quite a bit of service line replacement, two buildings, all the way to building fronts on the one block a third between Lyon and Main Street. So very involved project. It also includes the reconstruction of the Addison parking lot across from the movie theater. In the packet, you do have the feasibility report that covers a lot of these proposed improvements, the background and project schedule, proposed and estimated costs. I can summarize the cost. Right now, we're at, with considering some allowance for contingency and some engineering fees, we're at roughly $3.8 million in this project. Everything is being proposed to be assessed per our current special assessment policy. That includes participation from the water utility, the sewer utility, the waste party utility, and all the property owners in the project. We are proposing to call for a public hearing on the improvement at our next council meeting in January, January 24, I believe it is. Here for any questions if we, if we have some.
Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, just a, a comment on this, and Jason, thank you for, it was an excellent summary of the project. There's, for the new members, this has been a, a process that's involved a ton of input from the Downtown Business Owners Association, and then also the tenants that occupy the businesses on Third. And there's a lot of issues that intertwine with this. You know, we've all heard the constant complaints about available parking in downtown and crosswalk safety and a number of, of those issues, and I just want to say that I really appreciate the city staff and how hard they worked with input and, and really addressing all that, and then also having to liaison with MnDOT, because, you know, there's a lot of kind of competing desires, I guess, when this first started, and I think through the, the meetings and, and a lot of listening sessions, kind of getting everything out there, this turned into, I think, an amazing amount of, of agreement and support that's come out, and it's going to be one that, as a council, we're probably going to take a little heat as we go through the project, because we're going to put a pretty good look on this, and we're going to put the bones in to make Third Street potentially kind of a special little corridor. And, and as we move in this, you'll probably hear this a lot, and my preach is, is that we're building something with a 50-year legacy. So it's not just a, it's not a normal street project. We're going to really build something here that's going to last probably past the number of us, at least, myself for sure, sitting at the table here, that I think it's important that we keep that, that open look at it and do this, because it's one of the things that kind of makes Marshall special, and I think the investment that everybody's made in our downtown area is really starting to show, and it's being appreciated, and I think we just need to continue to move forward. So I just want to go in and restate my appreciation to all the staff time and, and the efforts by, by everybody involved, including the Downtown Business Association members that have really put a lot of time and thought into this, and it's been a, been a, I think, a really good process to get to where we're at now, so I'll stop with that.
Well, and thank you, Craig, and well said, and I, I think you, you've hit on key points here. This is not just a, a reconstruction project of a roadway and parking stalls and the pipes underneath the, the surface. This is really designed to not only serve those purposes, but also be inviting to the, to the public that is visiting the retailers and that are all along that, that area, something that we want the community to be proud of. It's a generational project.
It is.
Other questions? Other input? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the resolution to receive the feasibility report and call for a hearing on the improvement.
I move the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, Agenda number 24, the project, stated, 2021 State Aid Overlay Project and the Channel Park Resurfacing Project. We have a resolution to, for the Municipal State Aid System 2023 Advanced Funds. This is an annual advance request that we make. So go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this one's maybe a little confusing when you see a project title in there with the 2021 in the name, but because our state aid account balance is in what's called an advanced status, which is essentially we've overdrawn the account, we have a negative balance of roughly $2.4 million. When you're in that advanced state, you do need to request to advance, to further advance funds if you have more spending to do while you're in that status. So we do have the State Aid Mill and Overlay that we did in 2021, largely completed in '21, finished in '22. That project was bonded, and we're making principal payments out of the state, well, all loan payments out of the state aid account, so we need to request funds to make the principal payment for this year. And then we've got Channel Parkway, we've got a $1.25 million LRIP grant for resurfacing on Channel Parkway, and the dollars over and above that grant amount would be financed for the project from state aid as well, so that's another $500,000. So we're requesting to advance an additional $725,000 to make loan payments on the Mill and Overlay project that we've already completed, as well as help pay for the resurfacing that we'd like to do on Channel Parkway this year. If there's any questions, I can, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, Jason. Let me add just a little bit about what is the state aid account. The, because that is funded by state gas tax. Minnesota's constitution requires that a percentage of the, of the taxes collected on gasoline sales and fuel sales be allocated to communities for designated state aid streets, and those communities would be those communities over 5,000 in population. And then the formula is determined by the lane miles that are. Minnesota's constitution requires that a percentage of the, of the taxes collected on gasoline sales and fuel sales be allocated to communities for designated state aid streets, and those communities would be those communities over 5,000 in population. And then the formula is determined by the lane miles that are, that are in the community. And the advance of funds is really a reallocation of funds by the state because there's some communities that don't have projects, they don't have growth and development, and there's other communities like Marshall that tend to have quite a bit of, of investment in, and so this really reallocates their funds to communities that have, that have projects that need the funds. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say. We are allowed to advance up to a certain amount that I outlined in the memo, so we're not doing anything wrong by doing that. It is allowed. So yes, that's fair to say.
Okay. Questions for Jason?
And Mr. Mayor, just for the new people and the public that's watching, there's no cost to this. There's no added penalties for going overdrawn, if you will. In fact, we tend to get more because we're chronically and constantly redeveloping and improving and doing things like that. They don't charge you any extra interest.
Quite the contrary, you actually get a little more funding when you have an advanced account balance.
Right.
So it's not a bad thing. I remember when I was first in the new position, it was like, wow, we're voting for taking in more debt, and it's like, this is, this is just getting money from the state, there's no penalty, it's not really debt that we, we do acquire the debt anyway.
That's not what Mrs. Smith taught me in business class.
Right, right. Yeah, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda number 25, consider the resolution of support for the RACE grant application for the MINDOT 2025 College Drive Reconstruction Project. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. As some of you are aware, we've been working with MINDOT to apply for some federal funds for our upcoming shared reconstruction of College Drive. MINDOT obviously leading the charge on this application, it's their project, but we're partnering with them and helping put together a good application. We applied for a RACE grant last year. We were not awarded, as you're also aware, after the mayor gave an update maybe a few weeks ago, our application was actually never read and opened because of a file corruption issue. So we were a little frustrated that that happened. But we are working with MINDOT to submit again, and as part of that submittal, we're making the rounds for resolutions of support and other letters of support throughout the community, and probably the most important one comes from this body. So obviously, we've been working for a couple of years already, maybe two to three years on this project with MINDOT, doing planning, designing. So this is, it's a long time coming because it's still a few years away, but this would be a big help. I don't list numbers in here because I didn't have them handy. I put this in this week to try to help keep them moving. But roughly $3 million, I think, would be the City of Marshall's gain out of this grant for, help us cover costs for the street. It doesn't help us with water or sewer costs, but pretty much everything else it can, it can help us with. So it's, it's a great thing, and we would, we would, we would want to do this, I would think. So if I am here for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about this? So the Highway 19 reconstruction is scheduled at this point for 2025.
Yes, and likely a two-year project, probably '25 and '26 split in, in half.
Jason, and just roughly, it's going to go from approximately the Armory to the corner of Bruce, the intersection of Bruce Street and, and East College Drive.
Yeah, full reconstruction from Fourth Street to Bruce Street along the corridor, everything, utilities, walk, streets.
The Crow's Foot intersection.
Roundabout being added at the, the Chicken Foot or Crow's Foot at Country Club Second College. From Fourth Street out past Legion Park, there's also sidewalk and ADA improvements being added to the project, possibly a resurfacing of the street. Those things are still being worked out, but really great project, going to be really impactful for our community.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion for the resolution of support?
I'd make a motion for the resolution.
Motion by Amanda, is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay. We'll move then to the Commission Board Liaison Reports, and this likely will be brief since we just appointed people as liaison, but Craig, do you have anything?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Steve, do you have anything?
No, sir, nothing.
Amanda?
I do not.
And I do not either, and we're not going to call on you this time, well, next time we will. So we will move then to council member individual items, and this agenda item, if any council members has anything that they want to bring forward to the council's attention, this is time to do it. So Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And last time, last meeting, I brought up kind of a similar thing, but I just want to, again, thank all our city staff. I know it's more than just Public Works that has been dealing with all the snow and, and all the other weather-related work that's gone on within the city, but I want to say that with everything that we've had and how quickly they've cleaned up and opened up and widened out, drive through other communities in the area, and I'm just really proud of the work that, that our staff has done, and also the residents. I really tried to pay a lot of attention to what the fire hydrant situation looked like, and my hat's off to almost every, everyone that I've looked at, the people have opened them up and made sure that they're cleared out in case there, God forbid, there's a need to get it one, the fire department doesn't have to go dig them out. So I just want to thank the city, all the city employees. I know every department contributes to moving snow, and even our, our paths, our trails, Preston, I, I know that's your folks, and there's still sidewalks in other communities that are our size in this area that they're just trying to clean off those areas, and we were very accessible, and I just, I just want to thank them for all that hard work and thank our residents for paying attention to the snow emergency. I don't know how many vehicles actually got told, Jim, I know that they were busy doing some, but for the most part, I think people, people paid attention, and it shows when you drive the street, they're, they're as close to full width as I think we could possibly get with the amount of snow that we've got. So thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, we, a whole bunch of us got a letter from a, from a constituent, a city member about open ice at Red Baron, and I think that it's something that we need to look at. The complaint is certainly valid. It's that balance. You know, we want more Maha games, we want more Maha tournaments, everybody wants ice time. Every community I've ever lived in, anywhere across my entire life, has never had enough ice time for indoor ice. And outdoor ice is so inconsistent wherever you go that it's hard to get. And I grew up in northern Minnesota, and same thing, we always wanted indoor ice, there was never enough ice time. Outdoor ice was great, but you know, when it's 30 below and people want the indoor ice better, so it's just that balance. And I think that's not necessarily a bad problem to have. That means that people are interested in open ice, open skating, and there's a need for it, and we've got lots of hockey and Maha going, and so we need to find that balance. And so I appreciate that constituent sending us all the letter or the email, and we'll think about it, and we'll send it to the people that be to work on it and hopefully come to a resolution so that we can have opportunities for everybody for skating.
Thank you, Steve. Amanda?
I've got nothing.
Okay. C?
Nothing.
John?
Nope.
Let me do two things. First off, we started out the meeting by welcoming the new council members and newer council members, and let me just say I'm really happy that you are all, joined the group and will be serving the community. This is our first meeting of the year, and typically I go through about 10 items that I see as priorities for this council and this community to address. So I'll go through that real quickly, and then I'll provide a copy later. Number one would be to continue to address the request, legislative request for our sales tax extension. We all know that last year, this was in both the House and the Senate report, so it was included in the tax bill to allow the community to go to a referendum vote, to let the community decide that the sales tax should be extended to fund the construction of the new Aquatic Center. Since there was not a tax bill that was passed by the legislature, there wasn't this authorization, so we need to start over again. And in fact, so I think that would be a priority for this year, working with the legislature. Prior, at the prior city council meeting, the city council did engage the services of Marty Seifert with Flaherty and Hood to help us in this regard. And at the next council meeting, there'll be a resolution of support that will be presented to the council that's required before the legislature would be considering, and that will have updated costs and things like that that would be in there. And I'd also add, there is also a Senate hearing that will be, the first hearing that will be held tomorrow, and I'll plan on testifying at that. So that'd be number one. And then secondly, assuming that that legislature, legislature would provide that authorization, that would then allow, at least the way that, the most optimistic way that the legislation would be structured, would allow a referendum vote this November. So that would be our second priority in 2023. That would be the most timely we could be on the, kind of the vote of the public and if authorized, the reconstruction or construction. Third on my list would be to continue work on the discussion of the indoor recreation. We have a, we funded a study, and we probably need to spend some time discerning that study and if there's any partnerships that are possible out of that study. Fourth on my list would be, and I don't really call out individual projects, but let me just lump some things together in terms of industrial development, commercial development, and retail development. There are a number of projects that are not yet finalized, not yet public, but are kind of on the cusp, that will be, I think, exciting in, in 2023. Will also require, you know, quite a bit of work by our staff, so we need to recognize that. I'd also add, add to that, the list of 10 housing, while we do see changes in the housing market driven by interest rates, we also still see strong demand for, for rental housing, and you see development of that, and there's additional development that is being proposed. Finally, not finally, but I'd also add, as a broad category, infrastructure projects. We already have talked previously about the Third Street Project. We've talked previously about the Channel Park Reconstruction, and we've talked about preparation for the 2025 Highway 19 project, so that will, that will be important. We've also talked about parking lot reconstruction. So Jason mentioned that the Addison Parking Lot would be slated for this year. We also have the opportunity on what I will call the, the West River Parking Area, the area just off of Highway 19 on the west side of the river, across from Marvin Schwann Memorial Drive, that we have the opportunity to increase the utilization of, of that parking area, and that will take some investment by the city. I'd also add to my list the workforce recruitment. We know that we have employers in the community that have needs for additional workforce, and we need to, you know, do whatever we can to increase the workforce opportunities in the, in the community. The earlier action that was on the consent agenda about the workforce training, that's a key to that, but there's also other keys to that in terms of attracting and retaining families to serve the workforce in the community. We just celebrated the 150th, and that really is the history of Marshall, is trying to attract families so that there can be employers in the community that have employees. Two other things that I would add to, to my list of 10, and I may have lost count here, but the, one of the things that we do need to do, and it's really out of our control, but we need to really monitor, is to finalize our 2020 census challenge. You know, we have, you know, we pointed out to the Census Bureau an obvious miscount on the 2020 census because the census happened on April 1, 2020, right in the midst of COVID, two weeks after SMSU sent their students home, and the dormitories were closed. So we had a, an inaccurate count, and we really need to correct that. That has a lot of implications in terms of the future development of this community. And then lastly on my list would be the implementation of our 2022 comprehensive plan that we adopted this past year. So that's my thoughts for this coming year. Council obviously may have additional thoughts, and that's, we'll all work together in 2023. With that, I'll move then to the next agenda item, which will be staff reports. We'll start with City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
I think that was a really good rundown on some of the stuff we've been kind of working on together, but as the mayor stated, sales tax resolution, we will present that to council at the next council meeting. We had originally wanted to bring it tonight, but wanted to get better financial numbers in terms of sales tax bonding and what that looks like projecting out. And I know that our legislators, and maybe more so on the House side, would like to see some of that, those details, so we're going to provide that to him. And then I know the mayor mentioned the indoor rec study. I do have a draft report right now. It needs a little work to kind of consolidate it. We have an architect kind of working on facility side, and then we had a, we actually had a kind of an industry expert talk about uses of the facility, and, you know, I'll just say that, you know, we were, participate, had stakeholder groups, and there, even with all the facilities we have in Marshall and what we've done in the, in the recent years, feedback from stakeholder groups is there's still really not enough indoor recreation space. And we know that, you know, Southview was added and so forth, that that was really utilized almost from day one by, by other groups. So there, I can tell you the indoor rec study is going to say there's a need for additional court space or turf or some kind of additional facilities to, to, to help alleviate that. I, I know on the stakeholder meeting, and I'll just give you an example, the, the soccer group was represented, and he made sure, made sure he was at every stakeholder group, just because, you know, they've kind of had a voice, but, you know, really hasn't had an opportunity to kind of share what their needs are. So there's an area of need for sure. And the other kind of interesting perspective is that the school district, I think, charges like $15 an hour, if I got that right, for use of the court, but found that most families, I shouldn't say most, there's a number of families that would spend much, much more on that for specific sport training. So just kind of a lopsided view, you want court space, don't, don't really want to pay for it, but if you want specialized training for your child, you know, you're paying $200 to $300, you know, an hour for this. So that was just kind of an interesting, interesting perspective. And ice time, I do want to comment a little bit about that, that, that was definitely be noted in the indoor rec study as well. They have additional dry land, which is, you know, off, off the ice training facility needs as well. And, you know, how does that relate to the, you know, the future of, of what we can provide? So hopefully, we can get a final, kind of more of a final report and, and share that with you, and, and I think this is going to take a lot, lot more work, and, but it's a good foundation to maybe, in the future, look at funding sources and maybe future collaboration as well. So one last thing, I know Dr. Meister mentioned available ice time, and I, I will just say, I know that Council Member Lizinski brought up kind of the same topic, I think, in early December. He did share an email with me from an individual about ice time. So maybe after the meeting, I'll just kind of visit with you if it's the same person, different person, because we can certainly get in contact with that person, we'll hear a little bit more, and then talk about options and availability. I know I'm looking at Preston a lot, but we'll work closely together on that to see what we can do. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just want to thank everyone in the community for their patience with the snow emergency that we declared. Getting the cars off the streets and out of the way was extremely helpful for the maintenance crews while they moved a lot of snow. So just to thank you for that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions? Any questions for Jason? Pam? City attorney Pam Whitmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I just want to say thank you for working, agreeing to work with us, to staff and to council. We look forward to having this partnership with you. And other than that, I have nothing to report, so.
Very good. We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which you see, the administrative brief, which is there for the council's review, minutes from the Public Housing Commission, the listing of building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? John? You can make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
By John, seconded by C to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Did you vote? I voted yes.
Close the voting? The motion does pass, we are adjourned.